The Melvin Metzger Show. Exclusive interviews with distinguished guests. Community game changers, trailblazers, movers and shakers. UK 8pm, United States 3pm, Eastern, and Sierra Leone 7pm. I'm your host, Mr. Melvin Metzger on AMZ TV. Good evening, viewers. My name is Melvin Metzger, and I'm your host of the Melvin Metzger Show. I'm streaming live on Facebook, on AMZ TV platform, and you can also listen to us on School Days Radio. Please like my show page, share this broadcast with your friends. Tell a friend to tell a friend that the Melvin Metzger Show is on, it's live, and I've got a very special guest on my show tonight. Her name is Sia Fino, and she's from the United States of America. I've gone across the pond again tonight to America to get my next guest, but I promise you it will be an interesting and educating show. I'm gonna just read out a bit of information on my guest. She's a Sierra Leonean that was born in the United... She's a Sierra Leonean, born American, that lives in Maryland, United States. She's a candidate for Prince George County Council for District 3 in Maryland, USA. A former legislative aide to Maryland State Senator Nathaniel Exum, District 24, Prince George's County. She's also a former 2018 candidate for Maryland House of Delegates and a member of the volunteer team for President Joe Biden and Kamala Harris 2020 presidential campaign team. She's a political activist and an advocate, a grassroots campaigner and a member of the NAACP. Sia M. Fino, welcome to the Melvin Metzger Show.
Thank you for having me. Thank you. It's an honor to be here today.
I followed you on Facebook for a while, and then it got to the stage where I thought, I saw what you were doing, I saw your passion, I saw your dedication, and I thought I need to get you on the show so the voters can see what you're all about and how you dedicated to serving the community. So that's why we brought you in here tonight. I wish I was living in America. I would go door-to-door and help your campaign team because I think you're doing the right thing and you're here to serve the community.
Thank you so much.
Right. Normally, I start my questions with all my guests with the background. Could you tell us a bit about your background? I know you originally from Sierra Leone, but just tell us a bit so that the viewers can have a view of where you're from.
Yes, I am from the beautiful West African country called Sierra Leone. I am the daughter of Ahmed Yomba Fino and Lady Sato, Ali Sato Brio. I'm the first daughter and the first child, actually. And we came to the United States where my father, my dad, came to the United States in the early 80s. And right before the war, I was lucky enough, he was granted asylum, and that's how I came here in the early 90s. I think six months before the war started, and I came to join them here. I left when I was 13, and I came to the United States, and I've been in Prince George's County, the beautiful county in the world, since then. So this is my story. I'm a Sierra Leonean born, and it's such an absolute honor, you know, to be, you know, from a country that was regarded as the Athens of Africa, the first modern state in Africa. So I am honored. It's an honor to me to carry that flag, to carry that name. Thank you so much.
That's a good background. We could end the show right now, but there's more we have to talk about. When you came to the United States as a young girl, I think you were about, you said you were about 12 years old.
13.
What were some of the... You had to adapt to a new way of life. I know that must have been very challenging for you and your family as well. How did you adapt to the new way of life in the United States?
Well, they said when you go to Rome, you do what Romans do, and I came to the United States and I, you know, I came here, went to middle school, high school, and university here. So this is, you know, and I knew then that I wasn't going to go home. This was going to be my new home, so I had no choice but to adapt to the American system and the American community here. So this is, that's how I kind of get involved. My dad, actually, was a major player, a very influential person in my life. He pushed me, he encouraged me to be part, to get involved and do what I want to do, what I want to become in America. So I give him that credit. Like so many other children that come here, they don't have that support system where their parents can tell them that you can drink bigger than what the norm or what society is telling you. So I got involved very young. My first involvement was at the time I came, Bill Clinton, George Bush, and Ross Perot was running for, it was the presidential election. And I actually wrote a letter to Bill Clinton because it was...
Wow. Did you get a reply?
My dad was for somebody else, and I was for Bill Clinton. And actually, after he won, he wrote me back, you know, thanking me for supporting him. And that's when I said, wow, you know, so a president can actually write a child or somebody that is not, you know, nothing, you know, in the society. And that's when I thought, wow, I have to be part of this political system. This is great. It felt good.
Wow, that's great. So what was the feeling like when you received that letter?
It was great. You know, I was really surprised because, you know, from the country I'm from, you know, the president act like they're God. And here I am in the United States and a president that has never met me, doesn't know me, doesn't know my family, doesn't know my background, actually took the time to write me back. That was, it was phenomenal. That letter actually changed my life forever.
Wow.
That's where I am, where I am today.
Wow, that's great. So that could be a motivating factor for you joining Democratic Party?
Yes, yes, yes. I've been a Democrat since then, and I think I'm gonna die a Democrat. You know, even though the Republicans are kind of like after me, but I think I'm gonna die a Democrat.
Yeah, that's great. Wow. Also, for you to get this far, you must have had a very good education, a very good educational background. Tell us a bit about your educational journeys here.
Like I mentioned, I've been here and I went to middle school in America. I went to high school here and I, you know, I educated myself for myself through college. And I studied at the University of Maryland, I transferred to UMC, you know, got my masters, my bachelor's in political science, and I went to American University and I got my masters in international services. So this is my, and because of the COVID, I was actually supposed to start my law school, but because of the COVID, I, you know, I put that back and I'm, you know, actually deciding whether to do the law or maybe go into the medical field since, you know, COVID-19 exposed us that we need so much medical, you know, staff, staff members in our community, maybe I might go that way, but I haven't decided yet. Let's see how next year, after the elections, I'll feel.
Okay, that's great. So you got your education out of the way, you went, you decided to go into politics. Now, working as a legislative aide for a senator, that in itself should have been enough for me, but you still want to go further. What was the experience like working for Nathaniel Exum?
You know, it was, it was the greatest honor for me to do because, you know, when we come to America, you know, they tell us, oh, go be a nurse.
Yes.
Go, go, go do this.
Be a social worker.
This is not something that was expected, you know, like, you know, of us as a foreigner. So when he gave me the opportunity and I saw the way the laws are being implemented, the laws are being written, you know, and how people are the center of policy in America, that really got me going, that, you know, I too can be part and I too can make change in the lives of the ordinary folks. So after, after he left office, I started volunteering on political campaigns. I started with our county executive, Jack Johnson. I was the youngest female among the group, and I followed them around, you know, I would go, I wouldn't say anything, I would just sit down and listen. And from there, I went to another political campaign and that's how I got involved. I just threw myself out there and I didn't care about my accent. I didn't care whether...
I was gonna ask you about the accent, how you cope? Yeah. I was gonna ask you about the accent. You said you didn't care about your accent.
They loved me.
They loved it, yeah.
They loved me. They really embraced me. You know, because everybody have an accent. You know, the Spanish people have an accent, but they still get involved. So why not me?
Exactly. It's the same with me when I came back to the United Kingdom. I came with my Sierra Leonean accent, but I think I stuck with it and it's helped me get to the stage, right?
It's a pride, you know, it's a pride. And when I go to events, that's a conversational starter. You know, because when people take a look at me, they will not know I'm African. But when I start speaking and, you know, they're intrigued to see how come this African girl is so, you know, interested in American politics. And, you know, they never stopped us from getting involved. And, you know, it was, it's a welcoming feeling. You know, there are a lot of things that we have to change, but it's a welcoming feeling and they love it, they appreciate it that you, you know, you take the time to be part of their political system.
Wow, that's great. That's great, Sia. Well, let me ask you the question, why we're here? And why are you running for the position of county councilwoman? I'm sure that's what the viewers will love to hear.
And I always love that question, why not? This is my home.
Okay.
This is where I've been since I was 13 years old.
Yeah.
This is where I've raised two children, and I'm raising a third. But she actually started her first grade today. This is where I've been to school. I've spent, I've lived in America more than I've lived in Sierra Leone.
Yeah.
So and when your home is broken, when something is broken in your home, you get in there and try to fix it.
Yeah.
And this is how I see Prince George's County. It's my home. There's a lot of things that we want to do, we want to change. And I think I have, you know, I can bring my own ideas, my own fresh ideas, and see how we can move Prince George's County into the 21st century with 24th century solutions. You know, we are, we are all about solutions. You know, people always point finger, do this, do this, do this. They don't come out with solutions. Our team, my team, we're gonna come with solutions and how to fix Prince George's County and move it into the 21st century.
Into the 21st century, right. So tell us about your love for American politics. I know you received a letter from Bill Clinton. Just explain to us a bit about your love for American politics.
The reason why I'm so in love with American politics, you can actually change things when you get in office. And it's about the people, for the people, by the people. It is not anything that we all or the politicians, you know, take as personal property. You know, the politics in America is for the people, and you can get in there and change and touch the lives of the individual citizen in our community. You know, it's not, it's not for us, it's not, it's not a right of us to lead. It's a privilege and an honor for our constituents to even look up to us. You know, this is what I love about America, you can, you know, it's, it's for the people. You know, you really can get in there and get the work done if you really want to do the work. So that's what I love about it, for the people, by the people. They can put you in and they can take you out.
Wow, I love that. I love that. Wow. Viewers, we're live on the Melvin Metzger Show. My guest is Sia M. Fino, candidate for Prince George's County in Maryland, United States. Right, Sia, it's easy for people to vie for such positions. Everybody wants to be politician, everybody wants to get connected. Why, why are you different? Why should they vote for you?
Well, I am not part, you know, I always tell myself that I am, yeah, I am a politician if I want to accept that, but I'm the people's politician.
Yeah.
Because I came in, I have been through what most of our constituents have been through. I come with a receipt. You know, I am not from a wealthy family, you know, I wasn't spoon-fed. You know, I worked my way up to where I am today. And most of our people, I was constituent in Prince George's County, this is what they have done, this is their daily lives. So I understand their plight. I understand what they go through every day because I've been through it. You know, I'm a single mother, you know, raising, you know, I raised children. I was a, you know, teenage mom. I put myself through college. I was a divorcee by 20, you know, by 22. So most of the issues, you know, that I've been through, you know, there are people in my community that are going through it. So I am not coming there to, you know, power hunger, but I want to come in there and we cannot transform our community without transforming the lives of the ordinary people. So this is what I'm gonna do. I want to bring changes to the lives of my constituents so they too can feel as if they're part of the American system, the dream, the American dream.
Okay. Right, that's great. Bringing Prince George's County into the 21st century with 21st century solutions. Why are you... Please explain that to us. Bringing Prince George's County into the 21st, with 21st century, with 21st century solutions. Please explain that to our viewers.
You know, we're, you know, we are moving, and COVID-19 actually have shown us that we're moving into an era, the Fourth Industrial Revolution, which is technology, business, and government. And we, everything is margin together, and we cannot live without technology and science. You know, and this is the time for us to come when business, technology, I as the next councilwoman for Prince George's County, this is the framework that I'm gonna lay out for my constituents. When you have government, when you have a proper relationship with government, business, and technology, not only with the county, not only with the country, not only with my district benefit, but all of us, all of us, we benefit greatly. So this is the reason why when I talk about techno, we're moving Prince George's County into the 21st century. It's margin business, having a proper relationship where they work together, you know, come together and work together in unison with one another, the citizens will benefit greatly.
Wow. Prince George's County is a very diverse county. What's the cultural diversity like in that, in that area, in District 3?
You know, if you think about, we always say America is the melting pot. Prince George's County is the melting pot.
Okay.
Because everybody that you can think of from the globe lives in Prince George's County. And that's what we pride ourselves on, cultural diversity. Because, you know, a culture, our community cannot thrive without culture. So this is what we, you know, everybody, you know, we have, you know, white, black, Africans, you know, Spanish, especially in my community. So this is what make me unique, you know, in the community. You know, that I'm from somewhere, I'm international. You know, I can, I can relate to each and every one of my constituents.
And you get a lot of, you get a lot of good response, a lot of support from the other people of other nationalities or different colors?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's great. I think you're very, you're a very dynamic woman, and I think you're a very determined woman, and you're very, you, you, you know what you want, you know you want to help the community, and that's great. I'm happy for that. Right, let's move on. Share how your campaign will prepare future generations through skilled trade.
You know, we, we always focus on, you know, college isn't so much for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, and I always say this, that the reason why Canada is the most educated nation in the world is because they prepare their students, their high school students for the future, even before they graduate from college.
Yeah.
They train them in vocational. I don't know why people think that when you say vocational, it sounds so, so bad, you know, to people. But vocational programs actually, you know, is good for our youth, those that don't want to go to college. If we get them prepared before they get out of college, they'll be able to hand more money and be part and be stakeholders of the community instead of them languishing and have nothing to do. So we have to introduce that into our school system where, you know, if, you know, somebody, a carpenter, you know, we, we need carpenters to make chairs. We need nurses, you know, we need, we need mechanics. And there's money in it, especially in the United States. And cybersecurity is another one. You know, for instance, a couple of months ago, we've been attacked by Russia, you know, in the southeast or somewhere of, southeast of the United States. You know, we need people to amend our technological system. We need informatics, you know, people to, to, to make our, to keep records of our medical information. All that is building the economy in the community. So we have to invest in that, and that's the most. Because college isn't for everybody.
Yeah.
And that's another avenue of the children, the youth, you know, being taxpayer, you know, being stakeholders and they feel that they belong in the community. And we can change, we can do that.
Do you have it, viewers? Sia M. Fino, saying she can do better. She can do better for the community. She can improve the lives of the people in a community. Right, I'm gonna read one of your mission statements, which says, "Together, we will capture the spirit of Prince George's County that will promote integrity, honor, and respect to our great city." Can you add a bit to that?
Yes, integrity, you know, our integrity is more to me than anything in the world.
Okay.
Accountability, you know, we have to hold our leaders accountable for what's going on in the community. We need dignity for our people. They should be able to work, you know, we pay so much taxes in Prince George's County, but we don't have much to show for it. You want any good thing, you have to go to Montgomery County or go to another different county to have, you know, like you are, you are actually part of the society. We should be able to bring that into Prince George's County and make sure that our people feel proud of their county, that they are not working for free. You know, the taxes are so high, you know, we need to find a way of alleviating the taxes from our people.
That's great. I'm gonna ask another question, since we're talking to a woman here who's vying for a position of councilwoman. It's on the importance of women leadership role in politics in Africa. If you are successful, what would you do in a continent where it's male-dominated? What difference would you make in women's life? How would you motivate them?
First and foremost, I would like to say, you know, it's in Rwanda, 64% of the cabinet members are women.
Yeah.
And that can be done in other part of the country. But we cannot do that without building a stronger, you know, educational system that will allow these women, you know, to, to, to be, you know, to empower them, you know, through STEM. And when I say STEM, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. We have to make sure that women partake in those and be part of it. And when it comes to Sierra Leone, you know, my own country, I know we have an issue, you know, with women being in leadership role.
Yeah.
You know, we have to start, you know, opening more channels, educating our women that they are worth more than what's between their legs.
Yes.
We are worth more than what's between our legs. We are more, we are worth more than being in the kitchen.
Yeah.
We are, we are, we are, we are the glue in the society. You cannot bring anything into the society without getting women involved. If you want any sustainability in any community, you have to involve women in it.
Yeah.
And whether we like it or not, we're going into the 21st, the 21st century, we're going to the Fourth Industrial Revolution. Women are going to lead.
Thank you.
So it's about time that our men, our brothers, accept the fact that women are going to be forefront of that industrial revolution.
Wow, that's great.
So I'm encouraging our brothers, you know, our women first and foremost, to support one another, to stand by one another, to lift one another up. Because if we work together, our men, we have no choice but to accept us as equal in our society, in our community.
Wow, that's powerful. Now, how would you help cultivate the right mindset of women in, let me say, Sierra Leone? Because a lot of them are looking up to you. My wife follows you on Facebook, on Instagram. How would you help cultivate the right mindset for what you just said?
You know, I'm going back to education again, you know, and education sometimes, you know, people put, you know, it's not just getting a degree. It's your action, your behavior, you know, and what you do, you know, to your community, to yourself, and, you know, your home. You know, women have to know that, you know, first and foremost, you have to start within themselves, you know, to find that strength, that I am more, I am worth more than what my society or my, my tribe or my, my community, you know, instilling me. I can do greater. I can do anything just as anybody else in the world.
Sure.
You know, it's not, no disrespect to the, to the male. You know, I am a feminist, but I'm not, you know, I don't hate men. You know, we just need to encourage them and bring them on board because we cannot do without them. We need them to change their mindset, and we need to start changing our women's mindset that, you know, they're not just, you know, beautiful, but they're smart, they're strong. You know, they are members of society, and I've not read one chapter in the Bible or the Quran that says that women cannot, you know, be greater in society. If there is, please let me know.
Wow, there you have it, Sia M. Fino, a big exponent for female leadership. Women have been very subservient over the years, but here she is telling us that you can do better. Women can empower themselves. Right, back to our American story. This is a very interesting question that someone sent me. It says, "Why do you believe in the American dream?"
I, you know, this is America. I don't care what people say about America. I really don't. To me, America is one of the best countries in the world. This is the country you can come and said, "I want to be this. I want to be a trash collector," and you'll be a trash collector. This is the country you can come and said, "I want to run for office," and it will give you the ability to run for office. For me to have the audacity to say, "I want to be a part of the American political system," is the foundation that was laid in this country. This is what make America so great. This is the country of second chances. You can come here and lose everything in your own country and come to America and build more than what you have had before. So this is what, I believe in America and I believe in American dreams, and it do come true. You know, this is the land of the free, the land of the brave. When you work hard, you're rewarded. When you walk legitimately, you're rewarded. So this is the reason why I believe in America.
Wow.
And the dreams.
Yes. What are some of the issues? What are some of the issues you prepare to tackle when you become councillor of the county, Prince George's County? What are some of the issues you would like, you would tackle?
You know, my platform, I have so many, but the three most issues that I want to tackle, corruption.
Corruption.
I tell people, I come from a continent...
When you say, when you say corruption, it's a bit generalized. Can you be specific?
Yeah, corruption, you know, road and our corruption in, 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 in our licensing practices, in coding practices, in planning practices, you know, businesses, people, business people coming from the outside, coming in and, and, you know, robbing the hands of our politicians and doing things that are not right. You know, like I said, I came from a continent that celebrate corruption. I came from a country that celebrate corruption. I cannot come to the United States in Prince George's County, one of the richest, the richest county in the world per se, and I will still have to deal with corruption. It's a no-no. The second one is, is, you know, making sure that our elders are taken care of. This is their county, they build this county. We shouldn't tax them out of their homes. We shouldn't make them lose their homes. You know, let them die with dignity in their homes. And tax stations, you know, Prince George's County pay one of the highest taxes in the nation. And we have to find a way of alleviating or, you know, taking some of the, the property taxes off. You have a lot of people that are losing their homes because of taxes. We know, and, and the businesses too, and small businesses as well. We have especially minority-owned businesses. We are the first to create businesses, but we are the last to get funding. And when I come in there, I want to be able to provide funding for these small businesses, mom and pop businesses, black-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses. These are just few of my platform, the things that I want to tackle when I get in there.
Wow, that's great. Viewers, we're live on the Melvin Metzger Show with my guest, Sia M. Fino. I'd like to give them, Sia, if you permit me, your Instagram and Facebook address for those that have not been following you, is that okay? Can I share that?
Sure, that's fine, yes.
Yeah. You can follow her on I underscore, um, underscore Sia underscore Fino. And on Facebook, Vote Sia Fino, Sia M dot Fino. And Twitter, at Sia Fino. And LinkedIn, Sia Fino.
Yes.
These are some of the social media that you can catch, that you can follow her and follow her campaign. It's a very good campaign, I've been following her and
Thank you.
She's making great strides and I give her all my support. Like I said, if I was living in the United States, I'd be going on every door knocking and getting those voters out there to vote for you. So if you're watching and you live in that area, please come out and vote for her. She's got a very good vision for District Three in Prince George's County. So I'm appealing to you to come out and vote for her. She's the right person for the job and she needs your vote. Also, Sia, would you like to share some details on the fundraising?
Yes, you know, politics is all about money. You know, you cannot win elections without money. And, you know, in America, you know, politicians are not wealthy. You know, we, we do it because of the love of the job. And I am not a wealthy person, I want to represent you. I want to be able to speak for you. But I cannot do that if you don't, you know, financially support me. I need every, you know, bit of your money. I know, I'm saying that because I need it. I am not bashful about it. I need your money to do, to send out mailers to places that we can reach. We need money to make flyers as the campaign comes by. You know, we, we need a lot of flyers and we need billboards that are going to be going up. We need money to do that. And most importantly, I need your sweat equity. I need people to help me knock on doors, to phone bank, you know, come and we can, you know, you can be in your home and you can help me call the voters. This is about us, it's not, this campaign is not about me, it's not about Sia. If it's, if, if it was about me, I would have gone and get a six-figure job and, you know, take care of my kids. But this is about us, you know, it's, it's about us, we are family, you know. I need you. I truly need you. I cannot do it alone.
There you have it, viewers, you've heard from the, from the woman herself. She needs the funding so that she can reach every member of this, of her community. And we're gonna move on to renewable energy. Discuss the future of your initiatives that you've got for renewable energy in District Three.
By twenty, twenty thirty, Prince George's County should be covered in renewable energy. You know, when people talk about renewable energy, they talk about, you know, they think about flying cars and, you know, all that stuff. But actually, renewable energy, you know, create jobs, you know, in our community. It brings about economic development in our community. And, and that's, that's a source of income coming, especially our minority-owned businesses. That's a great source of income. So that's one of my, my platforms that I'm gonna, you know, actively push in our community. And I already know that the lady that I'm trying to represent, replace, she's a champion of that as well. So I want to carry on that baton for her.
Yeah, you mentioned about creating jobs. What's the unemployment? Is it high, have you got high unemployment in the district or?
And because, because of the COVID, you know, the COVID have really dealt a blow to our community. You know, there are a lot of, you know, people that are suffering right now. There are, you know, businesses have gone out, you know, business owners are out of business because, you know, they couldn't stay afloat. They need the community to come and we've been, you know, people have been homes for a year and a half now. And all that has really taken a toll on our community. And we want to see how, you know, moving forward, how we can, you know, robust the community again and, and get people to work. It's, it's really hard on our community, really, really hard.
You mentioned small business owner. So how would you support them when you become councillor?
Funding, funding is a big problem. It's a big problem, especially, I keep on saying minority-owned businesses because we are the bottom of the chain everywhere in the world. You know, we, we create the businesses, but, you know, there's no funding. And I'm sure they would love to have an assistant in funding. Funding is a big issue, you know, amongst small businesses. So that's one of my platforms and that's what I'm gonna champion, to assist them, you know, to get some kind of funding for their businesses so they can stay afloat and they can, because small businesses are the foundation of our community. When they die out, the community dies. So we have to invest in, in our small businesses, especially our minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses.
Oh, that's great, Sia, thank you. Well, it's gone so quick. As we come to the end of the show, what message do you have for your voters out there?
Like I said, I know my, my own, you know, community are the African immigrant community. Even though I'm representing everybody, but this is other people that we are here in America. You know, I know, you know, we all have our individual wealth, our individual, you know, rights and, you know, life is going on perfectly. But in America, everything is numbers. We are not represented. We don't even have one voice that represent the African immigrant community in Prince George's County. And this is what I want to do for us, you know, to have a voice, to come out and, and know that you too have somebody to represent you.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, when it comes to grassroots, you know, you know, we don't have any power. We don't, you know, we're just here living day by day and just going on our lives. But, you know, you see the way the Spanish people have utilized, you know, when they came to America, they have, they put people in strategic places that can speak for them. You know, and when you look at the Jewish community, you don't see, you don't see much of a Jewish people in politics in America, but they support the politicians. They are behind the politicians, you know why? When the politicians get in office, they speak for them, they represent Israel, you know. So those that, you know, I need each and every one of you to support me, to get me in there. I cannot do it alone. You know, by no means can I do it alone. I need you, you know, to stand with me, for somebody to speak for you, for your children. This is the reason why I have sacrificed so much, my children, my livelihood, just for you to have a voice. You know, just for you to be respected as an African in America. Somebody to speak for you, to stand up for you. I am your daughter, I am your sister, I'm even your mom. So I am one of you. Now, I, I don't often hear me say, "Yes, I am a Sierra Leonean", but I'm representing all Africans in Prince George's County. No matter where you come from in Africa, you can call me. I'm reachable, I am touchable. So please, I need your support. I'm counting on you. Will you, will you stand with me? Thank you so much. God bless you.
Wow, that's powerful. Well, there you have it, Sia M. Fino, candidate from Prince George's County, District Three. She's got a passion, she's got a drive, she's got a determination. And she, for me, she takes all the boxes, all the boxes. And thank you very, very much, Sia, for accepting this invitation. I'm really, as you can see, once I finish the show, I'm elated. I'm happy that you came on the show. And my viewers, and I wish you all the best in the future, Sia. And good luck in your future endeavors. And to my viewers, we've come to the end of another show. See you next week at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Thank you. Cheers, bye.
Thank you.
Bye.